Hello.
Hello, hello.
Hello.
Hello. Can you help me if I am?
I can hear you.
Okay. So what do I do? Just wait?
Let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Find you a flag and... I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Salute the state of New Mexico, the zia symbol, one of the friendship and uniting of cultures. Okay, before we get started tonight, I just wanted to let everybody know that we have the election here over the Monday and the future here in Edgewood will be governed by a commission manager form of government. We had quite a bit of turnout and hope that keeps up. So part of our job going forward is going to be to prepare for that change in the style of government. And the first order is going to be to certify the election results if the county clerk has them canvassed by then. And once they have them canvassed and we certify them, then the next thing would be to have a, within 10 days, adopt an election resolution calling for the election of five commissioners in November of 2021. After that, the work will move to districting and changes and cleaning up stuff in our ordinances to make sure that they transition over into that. So we're going to have a busy next 15, 16 months ahead of us. I hope everybody is prepared to get down to the work of doing that. Okay, first item then tonight is approval of the agenda. And I do have a couple little changes here. First thing we need to do on the consent agenda is pull the minutes for the council meeting of July 29th. They need more work. And down there, councillors on item four, number B, where it says condemnation of 11 Range Road, that needs, that's not condemnation, it should be clean and lean at 11 Range Road. Other than that, I will entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion, we approve tonight's agenda with your edit.
You got a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve tonight's agenda. We'll do a roll call vote. Start up here, councillor Harmio.
Aye.
Councillor Abrams.
Aye.
Councillor Abraham.
Aye.
And councillor Holly.
Aye.
Thank you, council. So that brings us into the next item, the consent agenda. And it's basically planning and zoning minutes, code enforcement, police report, animal control, municipal court. I'll entertain a motion on that one.
Mr. Mayor, I-
I have a comment. I would like in the future to see, since we're putting everything under consent agendas, can I see in the future a Parks and Rec agenda, a roads, a Parks and Rec report, a roads report, a wastewater treatment plant report, and a library report in there monthly as well?
So tell me them again.
Roads, Parks and Rec, wastewater treatment plant, and library. So we can get each department report monthly.
Mayor and councillor Abraham, we already got the approval of council for the wastewater treatment plant monthly report to be in there, and we also got the approval of the roads. You know, any complaints or just a status update of the roads every month. We did that at the budget meeting. But July, we usually do see library here and there, but...
I don't know about that monthly wastewater report. I think we're, didn't we figure we would go to the quarterly ones that go to the state?
Well, Mayor, the, it was Carla that agreed to that.
Mayor, council, if I may. So we're going to have the wastewater operators start submitting kind of like a monthly, here's what's going on with the plant report, but the numbers and all that are going to be reported as they're reported to NMAD on a quarterly basis.
Okay. I would like to hear each of the department heads monthly as to what's happening in their department.
Yes, mayor, council, if I may finish, please. The road department, we have given Chuck kind of the format and he's going to start submitting those as well. Andrea, I believe we had, she was submitting quarterly reports on us prior to this. So if you would like to have her change that, we can, but I mean, it's your, it's your call.
Well, we get monthly for other things. I mean, you could just do a quick, you know, this is what we're doing. And then do a more detailed quarterly report.
We can talk to them. You got a motion to approve it?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
You got a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve tonight's consent agenda minus the council meeting minutes for July 29th. Do a roll call vote on it. Councillor Holly?
Aye.
Councillor Abrams?
Aye.
Councillor Abraham?
Aye.
And councillor Harmio?
Aye.
Thank you, council. Okay, the next item then is a continuation of our ICIP discussion. Let me get this stuff straightened out here in a minute. And tonight, what we're going to do is continue like we did before, a little bit from the public. But we'd actually like to hear from the council members tonight and maybe some of the department heads. So for the members of the public out there who'd like to speak on ICIP, can you give us your name and then your comments? And we'll go one at a time.
Gerald Hopper. You want my comment now?
Go ahead.
I wanted to discuss the reuse line that we talked about last year. Well, I think the report shows a sewer line, but that's fairly expensive. I'd still like to see the reuse line stay on there because it would save water. We live in an awfully dry state. Also, I don't think we should put very expensive items on the ICIP because our state has no money. Church Street should stay high on the list in case we still don't have money to finish it. And I do want to bring up Apalucis, that's a short street, 24 residents, it's a thoroughfare. The road's in good condition and a chip seal might be ideal, maybe some footer road might get done this next year. And that's it.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public wish to comment about ICIP? Okay, seeing none? So Mr. Torres, what else do you need from the rest of us on this? Our, well, council members? If you've still got your handout from the last meeting?
Yeah, but I had, I had asked for an updated list. I thought maybe it would be included in this, in this packet, but there's no list at all included.
Carla got one done. It's basically trimmed all that down to trails, roads, parks, wastewater, sewer line extension, reuse lines, drainage projects, and equipment.
So, mayor, council, if I may really quick, so what we're going to try and do is kind of just take everyone's input for these first couple of meetings, compile that all into one big list, here's everything, here's all the asks, and then at the next meeting kind of go through and, you know, have you guys pick which ones you want for your top pick. I will say this, I did attend the virtual ICIP training this year, one of them, with the DFA. And so one of the things that they've been stating that we need to keep in mind is that they anticipate the funds being very limited next year. So to try and pick projects with that in mind, I mean, really kind of go off of your needs versus your wants. But then she did qualify with, you guys can ask for whatever you want and it's up to your representatives, but she just said, expect lean times this next go around.
And so in that vein, basically what we asked for last year was our top three were wastewater, the motor grader on equipment, and then more money to finish paving Church Road.
Yes.
And I don't know that it will deviate a whole lot from that. We do have stuff like trails, we do have parks, Venus Park, multi-use recreational complex, soccer fields, stuff like that. That's one over on, that would be down by the sewer plant. Of course wastewater treatment plant, improvements and screens. And then the sewer line extension, there's stuff on Edgewood 7, Route 66, New Mexico 344, Williams Ranch Road, any number of them. A reuse line would be coming up here to Venus Park to water that soccer field that's there. Drainage projects, all of those with, you know, cactus, Quail Trail, Venus Road, Horton. And so there's six or seven of those here, and then the motor grader. And so-
Okay, so, Mr. Mayor, do we know how much we still need for the sewer plant screen?
They've got here $650,000.
We already have that.
You've got that, that's a-
Didn't we get a grant for that?
That's the Clean Water State Revolving Fund.
It was just on there because it's a project that already has funds allocated to it.
Okay, did you hear that? Yeah, so that one's got the money. And the other one is the wastewater treatment plant improvements. And there's 900, that's the one we got this last year, $915,000. That's dedicated toward it, pending the capital assets list. And then motor graders down here. Any of those drainage projects, they've all got different amounts. So yeah, it's basically down the trails, roads, parks, wastewater, sewer line extensions, reuse lines, drainage projects. I would like to try to get that motor grader one done. Theoretically, they had money in there for it and got swept up in COVID. And I think the church road one, what they've got there is there's a pending bond sale from general fund, it would switch from a general fund appropriation to a bond appropriation. And that's something that the state's trying to get done, but they just haven't pulled it off, right?
Well, you can't really do a bond sale with the market the way it is right now, but they're going to try.
Yeah.
And mayor, council, so with respect to Church Street, the reason for the additional ask, so with the funding, if we receive that additional funding that's there now, that'll be enough to pave the road. But to do the trail and all, I mean, everything else we want to do, basically make it that complete street, you know, where it's got the road and the trail on the side for pedestrians to walk. And that would take that trail all the way from Williams Ranch to the sidewalk right there by Walmart. So that would be the reason for the additional ask, in addition to that money that if we get it from the bond sale. But if we get that money from the bond sale, that will be enough just to pave the entire road. So our 2019 appropriation for Church Street is still intact and whole. And so if the bond sale does not go through, we plan just to use that money at least to pave it as far as we can. Hopefully maybe get it to Aspen. But that's kind of where we're at right now. Hopefully that sale will go through and we'll be able to pave it all the way. But we're still having that ask in there, so we can actually have a complete street with the walking trail on the side.
Will that address all of the drainage issues as well?
The 1.5, is that what's in there? Yes.
Yes. Now again, when they designed it, I do believe like there are some areas that where the draw cuts through, and I don't think they, they were just designing that one not to try and contain the events or anything like that, but just to protect the road and keep the road, the hard surface intact. But other than that, yes, it should control, I mean, have the drainage, have actually a bar ditch on the side, change the flow so you're not going to have those big pools that are there as you're driving, you know, on certain parts where it pulls up, that change all of that, so it would have adequate draining. Just where the draws cross, it wouldn't be, you know, it wouldn't be like, I guess, detention or retention ponding for those. I mean, so if we have a 100-year event, it's clearly going to go over the road. But that way, at least it'll protect the roads, the road doesn't wash out.
There's also a bunch of chip seal projects on there. Have they been priced out?
Yeah, so I don't know if you heard Carla, we've got a bunch of chip seal projects that are-
We have estimates.
We have estimates for, so that would, that would qualify as shovel-ready. And those are the ones that last year, they weren't on our ICIP, but we put in for them with the local government road fund.
These were those ones we tried to get, and at the last minute, they whittled everything down to just seven over there. It would be Frost Road or West Venus, East Dinko, Quail Trail, East Church, McCall Road, and West Dinko.
And this, these were the roads that we were asking for, and then if you recall the budget hearing when we were discussing the roads, the maintenance portion of it. I mean, it's nice to have the hard surface, but those are the roads that are going to need maintenance. And hopefully, we'll receive the funding so we can get the maintenance on them sooner rather than later, or else we're going to end up, you know, doing a much bigger project than just a chip seal.
There's no local road government funds this year. There was no appropriation made for it.
So I don't know if you heard Carla on that, there was not any local government road fund appropriations this year.
Can somebody give Carla a mic?
I can take off my mic. The local government road fund wasn't given any appropriations this year, so we won't be able to apply for funding from that program.
Okay, thank you.
So councillors, what are your thoughts?
I guess, yeah, that would be one of our questions is what, what projects, what things would you guys like to see done? What has the public told you as well for projects? And just so we can start planning for it, I know they always want, they always say they like the term shovel-ready, where it's designed and ready to go, but at the very least, if you have something new that we don't have, we can at least start working towards possibly getting a design or some funding to look into, you know, whatever it might take for, for that project.
I had a discussion with Roger Holden before the last ICIP meeting, and he just wanted to remind me that we need to be seeking funding for those projects, for Echo, the Echo Ridge, BLM land, and to make sure we don't lose anything for the trail on Edgewood 7. So those are both high priority as far as trails and needing funding. We have some funding, we just need to make sure we don't lose it, that we're able to go ahead and complete the projects within the timeline that is out there.
Councillor Abraham, Carla, we have two awards, one for Echo Ridge for about $97,000 and one for the design of the trail on Edgewood 7 for $92,000. That money becomes available October 1st of this year. So we can't contract for anything until after October. It's a federal fiscal year funding grant. But we do have those two funds accounted for. As far as we know right now, that's enough money to design Edgewood 7. The estimate for Echo Ridge came in a little higher than the amount we have appropriated, so we'll, we'll have to discuss that at a future time.
Okay, so I would like to make sure that we don't lose that opportunity on that piece of property. So whatever you think we need to put in for that, I think we definitely need to get in there.
Well, mayor, council, so real quick, with respect to Echo Ridge, we won't lose anything per se. We can always re-lease it. I think we can-
It runs through 2021.
This one, current lease runs through 2021, and we can, we can do another lease to finish the improvements and then to eventually purchase the property.
We've reached out to BLM, they're not working at all in New Mexico, but we do have, we're trying to contact them now to make sure that we start that project on time.
But yeah, so in our last conversation with BLM, I mean, we're not in jeopardy of losing the lease on it. So and when the lease expires, we will have the opportunity to re-up the lease. We just won't be ready to purchase it in time, I mean, because we've got that improvement plan and we'll see how much of, you know, how much of the funds we, you know, we have or what we'll be lacking once we get into that project.
Okay, so that was, that was what he wanted to make sure, is that we're following that improvement plan so we do not lose the option of purchasing it. He did say, you know, we have to make sure we stay on track with that so we don't lose that option to purchase it at the, at the very reduced rate. So I just want to make sure that that stays on there, that we have the funding, that we follow through with that.
So councillor Abraham and mayor and Mr. Torres, what, has anything changed since that plan? And how much would it cost to, to stay on track with those improvements that we need to do?
At Echo Ridge, $250,000, and Edgewood's, yeah, Edgewood 7 trail design of, total estimated cost, $97,500. Which again is in place.
Yeah, the funding is in place for both. The fund, the complete funding is in place for the trail, for the design of the trail. There is funding in place to start the improvements at Echo Ridge.
Right.
There's about $97,000 that we have awarded right now, that we can start the improvement. Nothing's changed in the plan of development, councillor, if that answers your question, it's still the same one.
But the only thing is, you know, like, you know, I can think of a specific comment that I read from Martha Turner where she's saying, basically, you know, you, you all on council need to make sure that you're funding these things that you're planning for. And I think that that's what councillor Abraham is trying to get us to make sure, right? That we don't say we're going to purchase this and then not keep up with our commitment to do this with funding.
Well, and given that this, both of those projects already have a certain amount of funding in place, especially the one on the Edgewood 7 design, that really doesn't need to be on ICIP.
No, just like the screens really don't.
Yeah.
But I will say this, both of these projects have federal funding. So if you're looking for a commitment to say we move forward, if we spend $1 of federal funding, we're committed to completing the project.
Yeah.
They will make sure that- They'll make sure that if we spend $1 of federal funding towards making improvements out of Echo Ridge, then we are basically committed to funding the entire project.
Okay. So where would that funding come from?
It's already come. It came from the feds, from FHWA, Federal Highway Administrative Funds.
No, Carla, I'm saying that you said that it was short, right?
Oh, it is short.
We don't have quite enough.
Right. We'd either have to apply for more grant funds or we would have to commit to fund it ourselves.
So is that something that we need to do right away? I mean, I know some of you guys have grant writing expertise.
It's a, the current grant runs from October 1st of this year to September 30th of next year. So we could apply for another trap grant this year.
Okay. And then when is the, the purchase expectation?
The current lease runs to the end of 2021, December of 2021.
So the purchase portion, my understanding of it is, and this is what we're trying to get clarification from BLM, so the purchase option only becomes available to us once we live up to the expectations of the plan. So once we build everything, then we're able to purchase it. But like I said, there's no way, I don't think there's any way we're going to get that done this year by December 2021. So we'll probably be looking to reapply for that lease. It's in the, what is it, five-year lease? Another five-year lease to complete everything. And I think once we get into this current funding source, we'll see what, you know, where the shortfalls are. Because this, you know, the, the plan was, it's a little bit weird. It wasn't created by like engineers or something. So the, we don't really have engineered cost estimates for some of the projects or some of the things that it calls out compared to like other projects when you move forward. This, the plan, this plan was created by the Forest Service and then we, we took that plan and submitted that to BLM for approval. So it's, it's not, I guess I'm just trying to say it's not your traditional plan that we, that we see for projects.
Right. I'm just, I'm just saying that Roger wants to make sure we keep that on the ICIP and keep seeking funding to complete it. So that's all I'm saying. I don't know how much we need or any of that, because I don't have an updated list, but I want to keep that on the ICIP.
Thank you, councillor. Any other councillors?
And Mr. Torres, I'm just, you know, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just not understanding. You said that, that it was not changed, the plan was not changed. But then I just heard you say that it is changed because we're going to, instead of purchasing, you want to extend the lease for five more years, but that wasn't a plan.
Mayor, council- Councillor, hold on just a second. Let's, let's, this is going to go back and forth and back and forth. The agreement was that we would make the improvements. And the Forest Service helped us design those improvements. They were submitted to the BLM. The BLM agreed to them. And we got a grant to get going. We can apply for a second grant and we can keep it on the ICIP. We're not going to get funding from, from the state. I can tell you that right now, first of all. It hasn't changed the plan. However, it has taken longer to get everything together than was originally thought it would take, which means we will have to extend the lease so that we can finish the upgrades, the, the, the plan that the Forest Service gave us, that the BLM is insisting on. Once we are done with that, then we are eligible to buy the property. But that means that we have to extend the lease so that we can actually accomplish the task. Does that make sense?
Well, that entirely makes sense, except for that's the first that we're hearing about this, that it's taking longer than it should, because everybody was on track for doing this, this money and purchasing for when the lease was up. I don't think anybody talked about this five-year, five-year extension. Nobody talked about that. Council had this in the past.
It's not a five-year extension.
Didn't it want to just say it was?
It would basically would be applying for a new lease, a new five-year lease on the property.
Yeah, and that's what everybody's worried about, because this very good deal, you know, this very good pricing.
The deal doesn't, the deal doesn't go away if we need more time to complete the work.
Roger indicated it might, so I'm just going with what I heard when I talked to Roger. He wanted to make sure we put it up there and that we get it funded.
I'd certainly like to have that verified, because that's not what I recall, but okay.
Anybody else got any thing they'd like to see on the ICIP? Anybody else got any thing they'd like to see on the ICIP?
This is Counselor Holly, I would like to see a finished church road, so I'd like to keep that on the list. And in addition, I think the motor grader should be on there too. It sounded like we had the money or we almost had the money for that. And that's something, if we're able to acquire that, that will serve us for many years in the future. So I think those two would be my top priority.
Thank you, Counselor.
And then, Mayor, I don't have the list that you were looking at, so I can't tell what, where things are at. But as far as the, we don't have anything on there for residential sewer, do we?
Uh, there's sewer line extensions, there's a number of them listed out. But yeah, we didn't have anything planned on there. Like that old list we had there for last year that Juan put in there just so we could see what stuff was being talked about. Had that one on the 344 area that would just go straight up 344 there. That was the only thing, but it's got all these possibilities, but there's none of them committed to anything.
Okay, so I guess that would be my comment is for now, we really do need to focus on making sure that our sewer plant has everything that it needs, to the extent we can, to make sure that we're within our permit and all the numbers are safe for the public, all of those things. And I know you have already a lot of things on track for that. But I guess for me, just due to the public safety and health, that's very critical to keep the plant in, in the best state that it can be. And then also I agree with Counselor Holly on, you know, the greater, and whatever we can do on roads. But as we know, they usually, they're on the list, but they don't always, you know, they don't always get funded. And with a year like this, it may not. So top priority, I think, is the wastewater treatment plant itself. And not, not anything to do with lines or residential sewer at all.
Understood. Counselor Abrams, you got anything?
Yeah. I think the top of the list for this year should be that motor grader. I know we're not going to get any road funding and I doubt seriously that we're going to get any trail funding. I would still like to see us connect the trails that we have somehow. We have a beautiful trail that runs partway down 344. We've got a very nice trail on a piece of Horton. We've got a bridge project that's going in at our soccer field slash park. And once that bridge goes in, there's nothing connecting it. So we got to start thinking about how, you know, we're going to put this all together and connect all of these things. I'm not saying to put trails per se on the ICIP, but we're going to start having to think about it.
Counselor Abrams.
It's nice being.
I'm sorry, Carla, just really quick, there is a, believe it or not, a CARESAC grant application for trails, an outdoor, they got money from COVID for trails, that's not very much, the state of New Mexico got about half a million dollars. And they've sent out a request for grants that, the maximum I think you can get is $25,000.
Twenty-five thousand.
$25,000, so we're going to apply for that. I mean, clearly it's going to be very competitive for not very much money, but we're putting in an application.
So Mayor Counsel, the only thing that we're hesitant on with that and we're trying to look into is typically any fed funding, the trails have to be 100% ADA compliant if you receive any fed funds. So that would rule out any crusher fine and that would make the trail very expensive.
Starly more than $50,000.
Yeah, and that's what we're trying to look at, would it even be beneficial to take the money, you know, apply for that funding if it's going to, if the trail's going to end up costing us several hundred thousand dollars for $25,000 worth of grant.
But there are other, other things you can apply for there, you can apply for playground equipment. So there's other options to look at.
The other thing that, that I think we've talked about in the past that I think has sort of slipped and is not on the ICIP is we had talked about solar out at the, at the plant and trying to offset the substantial cost of running everything for the town as far as electricity is concerned. I'd still like to pursue that, I think that that could save us a great deal of money over many, many years.
I'll put it on the list for the next meeting.
The cost currently has come down substantially. And the, the, I don't know, cost benefit, if you will, has gone up. So I think we ought to look into that. I don't think that putting it on the ICIP at this point is where we need to go with that. But I would like to see us get going at least a little bit on some of that. And we've got some rooftops that we can, we can help out with, the police department and the community center being two of them. We've got a rooftop that has a little solar on it over there at the Public Works Building. You know, it's nowhere near what the building uses unfortunately. But we really, really need to think about that. We'll see what the future's going to bring. We definitely need the finished church, that is one of our arterials that really needs to have pavement on it. And it really needs to have some attention to fix some of the ponding that happens on that road when it really rains. There are a couple of other roads I think that need a lot of attention. One of them that hasn't been mentioned is Broken Arrow. Broken Arrow has a chip seal on it that's now beginning to fall apart, is the easiest way to describe it. So that needs to be done. The other thing, of course, and this one has been mentioned, is Frost, Frost is a heavily trafficked road. And it's beginning to be, well, let's put it this way. When you cross the county line from Bernalillo County into Santa Fe County, it's embarrassing. And I'd really like to see that fixed. Other than that, roads and trails, roads, trails, solar, and that's about it.
There is one other item I would mention, again, it's just throwing it out there so you're aware of it. But that would be a tractor for James to run a mower with. Don't have a figure or anything on what it would cost, but that would be something that he would like to have. That old tractor he's got's not too bad, but he's got two mowers and if he had another tractor, he could cover a lot more ground in a hurry. So I just want to throw that one out there as one to think about discussing.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'll create an unranked alphabet, alphabetized list for the next meeting and have it out to all of you.
Okay.
When the agenda goes out.
All right, Counselors.
Do we have any other department heads that had requests?
None, none of them are here that I've heard of or anything. And Chief Crowe and them gave us theirs back there, didn't they? The stuff they wanted at the budget there.
I would like to put on, put on there the pay station for the Equestrian Center as well.
Okay, so let's wrap this one up. We've got your list of stuff and Carla, like she said, she's going to compile it into an unranked list and have it first at the next go around.
Can we have a really clean, can we get a really clean list?
Yeah.
Take off all the stuff that's been funded and have it as part of the packet so everybody can look at it?
We'll try that. Okay.
Thank you.
Next item in here is public comments, if you'll hang on just a second. Let me get my sheet over here. Okay, members of the public, so I've already got Linda Hill down here, who else wants to speak?
Tom McGill.
Linda Burke.
Karen Kaiser.
Martha Eden.
Ray Sigur.
Jeremy Toon.
Shannon Toon.
Hold on. What was that first Toon?
Jeremy.
Oh, Jeremy.
Jeremy Toon.
And I think Karen Kaiser and I spoke at the same time.
All right.
Martha Eden and Karen Kaiser should be both on there.
What was the other Toon?
Shannon.
Shannon. Anybody else? Okay, we'll start with Linda Hill.
That was two minutes to Jerry Powers.
I see that, Linda, did you have something you wanted to say?
No, it was just to give her two minutes.
Fair enough. Okay, then we'll start with Tom McGill.
Thank you, Tom McGill, 12 Buck Road. I've observed that the biological and chemical data for the Edgewood Wastewater Treatment Plant for the second quarter 2020 has not been posted on the town website. We are two-thirds of the way through the third quarter and we don't know how it's doing. I don't think there's any point in refusing to post data for the largest stakeholder, the public. And in the packet, the second quarter reports reveal that although coliforms were within the discharge limit for the first time in nine months, they still indicate the plant is not working to its historic norms. We know that you can get low E coli and coliform numbers by adding sodium hyperchlorite to raw sewage before it is tested. The town bought expensive samplers that are not being used. Those samplers aggregate samples throughout the day and are refrigerated and they're in the appropriate places. Instead, samples are grabbed downstream after the advanced disinfectant takes place. The current permit is going to expire September 3rd, there will be no new permit September 3rd. The old permit will be administratively continued. This is due entirely to incompetence and neglect because of lack of management. In my opinion, this is the operational equivalent of going into receivership. I ask again that the governing body wake up and take charge of this multimillion dollar liability, to ask questions and at least pretend you care about professionalism and post biweekly or monthly results, actual numbers on the site until the plant can be considered safe again. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next person up is Linda Burke.
Hi, everyone, Linda Burke with Greater Edgewood Area Chamber. A little bit of good news here, the governor is going to allow restaurants to reopen indoor dining as of Saturday at 25%. And churches, places of worship will be allowed to increase indoor congregations to 40%. So we're at least getting a little bit more freedom back, which is nice, that should help our local economy a bit, which is always good. Also wanted to let you know that the Chamber is hosting our annual, fifth annual actually, Bus and Clays event on Saturday, September 26th. It will be done a little bit differently this year to accommodate for social distancing. We will have specific assigned start times so that we can stagger people throughout the course and we won't have people close together in any large groups at any time. But we'll be able to keep doing it, so that's, that's a great thing. We're also working some more, we'll be having Discover Edgewood, we'll be doing some radio ads again real soon. We're going to dovetail those with the Town's Eat Shop Day effort. And the new interactive map is ready and will be on the Chamber website, which will send a link to Carla or whoever you'd like to see so that we can have it linked at the town website as well, no matter how people are trying to find out information about Edgewood. And then lastly, effective September 1st, the Chamber's name will be changed to reflect our full coverage area. So we will be known as the Greater East Mountain Chamber as of September 1st. It's not a change in our coverage area, it's just a change to reflect our, so that all of the membership does feel more represented in the organization's name. And that's all I've got for tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up is Jerry Powers.
I understand Linda Hill was going to donate some time and there were a couple others that wanted me to speak on their behalf, Jeremy Toon and Shannon Toon. So I would like to say a couple of things about the results of this special election. The town actually set some records with 1,018 voting for the change in government and 462 voting against, which means a record turnout of 41%. So anytime you get an excess of 66% and two-thirds, it's a super majority, which is almost unheard of in today's elections. In my family, it's a hard thing to get two people to agree on something, much less 1,000 people. And it's, a super majority is required in Congress to override a presidential veto, it's a very rare thing. So the significance of that is, I think, indicative of how people are feeling about wanting a change in the way their government operates and behaves here. Government's supposed to be a representation of the will of the people who live here, not in spite of the people who live here. In July of 2018, the town held a forum about FCor and the overwhelming takeaway was against the FCor takeover. But instead of listening to the people for two years now, the town has kept spending legal fees and meeting out of the public eye in closed sessions while preparing to sue FCor. The town did not listen to the people when they came out overwhelmingly against residential sewer, spending millions of dollars on sewer system phase one, which was actually built on the Bassett property, and is now proposing phase two of the residential sewer, which will cost millions more, on a line that no one wants. The town is more shut down and more hostile to public input than ever in its history. That your new rules require that the minutes be scrubbed of any comments, such as the ones I'm making tonight, by any citizen in town so there will be absolutely no record of what people say or want. Under the new rules, the counselors who do listen to people can't even put items on the agenda for a public meeting for discussion, debate, much less any action. This prevents the representative democracy that people want and deserve. And people realize that you're not listening to them, much less representing them. So I want to speak for a minute to Counselors Abrams and Holly. All of the things that have upset the voters so much so as to create the super majority for a change and historic voter turnout happened on your watch. Definitely the mayor sets the agenda, but none of this could have happened without both of you voting for the same measures that have upset the citizenry to this degree. All it would take is one of you to decide to listen to the will of the people that is sounding in your ears with this election and make the changes required to organize this commission manager government without delay and restore this government to the open democracy that it's supposed to be. So I realize that the town solicited an attorney's opinion from the AG's office, who was a junior attorney who recently got his law license. And it said what it is, I believe you wanted it to say. But you remember the last time that you solicited an opinion and they said, the attorney said you didn't have to hold the election in August. The judge overrode that opinion and ordered you to follow the law and hold the election in August. So the statute says that the majority of votes cast on the question favor organizing under commission manager, which it did overwhelmingly. The governing body shall proceed to organize the municipality under commission manager form. So even if you choose to believe the opinion of one attorney over another, is always what makes a good lawsuit when two attorneys disagree. Nothing in the statute prohibits you from listening to the resounding vote of the people, following the statute and restoring the government to a representative democracy without having to wait another year and a half. Thank you.
Okay, that brings us then to Martha Eden. Okay, that brings us then to Martha Eden.
Hi, I'm Martha Eden, a Orange County resident and satisfied Epcor water customers. I am directing my comments tonight to councillors Holly and Abrams. When the Epcor water takeover was first discussed in a council meeting, citizens in the many dozens spoke out against it. In the aftermath of that meeting in July of 2018, most residents went home, thinking they had put that idea out of the governing body's collective head, and basically they wrote that problem off as not needing to be worried about anymore. Some of us were not convinced, and a series of EPR requests from basic research proved that in October through December of 2018, thousands of dollars were being spent on legal fees to quote "study Epcor condemnation" unquote. In addition, sewer line extensions to virtually every residential neighborhood on both sides of 344 south of Dinko were included in a $700,000 Smith engineering project design, another part of the mayor's agenda that is highly unpopular among citizens who have perfectly adequate and safe private septic systems. You councillors, Holly and Abrams, chose to enable the mayor to stuff his agenda down the throats of the citizens of this town despite you being fully aware your constituents were starting to realize how damaging that agenda is to the town's future. For the life of me, I cannot figure out why you two chose this path, but you did. I guess you thought we were too stupid to figure it out and too lazy to fight back. Well, at least at this point, you can admit you were wrong on those two counts. Elected officials have two options in their governing choices. They can vote their personal opinions, which works if the majority of voters are of like mind, or they can listen to what their constituents are saying.
Hold up a minute. Hold it, hold it.
What's the problem?
Councillor Holly lost her connection, so let's just
Hold up a minute.
Take a quick recess.
Let's take a little recess here.
I'm back.
Okay, she's back.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Eden.
As of tonight, you can choose to stop endorsing the mayor's highly damaging agenda for the town, and you can start voting to reflect the will of the supermajority of the town's voters. If you simply cannot stomach making this change in your governing choices, you should resign now, tonight. And then Mayor Bassett will have the delightful task of finding two interim appointees that will pass muster with councillors Abraham and Hermio. Thank you.
Next person up is Ray Seeger.
I dialed back in and I said that
Okay. Ray is gonna have to wait until after the next speaker. His phone just went out. He'll dial back in. Did you have my, Karen Kaiser?
Yeah, hang on a second.
Alright, thank you.
His call cannot be completed. It's dialed.
Ray, you're on there. Go ahead and talk.
He can't, his phone
Well, we can hear him.
We're dialing back in.
We can hear him.
Could use your phone. Not really.
Can anybody hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Oh, you can?
Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead, go.
They're hearing me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I'm I'm in a position where my phone is falling apart here, so I am not going to speak. But I will donate my time to anybody that'd like to add it on to their time. Thank you. Did that go through?
That went through.
Did you hear me?
We heard you. That brings us then to Karen Kaiser.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, or should I say Commissioners. And as Jerry mentioned, we just witnessed history being made in Edgewood with nearly 1,500 people voting, which is three times the normal turnout. 70% of these people voted for the change to commission manager in a landslide. I hope that you will not ignore such a large number of residents demanding change. While we won't elect new people until November 2021, transitioning to this important change should begin now. I see this as a profound vote of no confidence in you, Mayor Bassett, and probably a vote of no confidence in councillors Abrams and Holly, since they always vote with you. Please, start listening to the people you were elected to represent. Secondly, I just wanted to ask again, I've asked this repeatedly, anywhere you check the duties of a town clerk, their duty is to prepare the town minutes, not the secretary, but the town clerk. And we have two of them, and I really beseech you to have them perform the duty of preparing the minutes of our meetings. They'd be way more accurate. In the most recent ones, it was quoted that I said, "Spend more money on Epcor", when in fact I said, "Stop spending the town's money on the takeover of Epcor". There's a big difference there, and if they were written by one of the clerks, I feel certain that that wouldn't happen. And lastly, I was concerned when I saw 11 Range Road as condemnation, but I understand now, Mayor Bassett, that you've corrected it to be clean and lean. I'm sure Tanya Martenson and Tim know what they're doing, but I understand that property is currently in the foreclosure process, and that just jumped out to me as possibly very problematic legally and not a responsible move from a risk management side to be tearing anything down, certainly without the express permission. I wouldn't take any action on the property without the express permission of the lender who has a secured interest in a first lien position on 11 Range Road. And with that, I thank you, and congratulations to everyone on this outstanding victory for our town. Thank you.
Does anybody else who didn't sign up wish to speak? If not, okay. That's it for public comment. Next item is matters from the councillors. Councillor Abrams.
Well, it's nice to hear from the same folks again this evening. It seems like we're gonna change our government here in a couple of months. And with that, there's gonna be an awful lot of changes that we're gonna have to marshal. I'm looking forward to that. I'm looking forward to what's gonna happen next. I'm very, very curious to see how things go and where they go. There have been a lot of people accusing me of some kind of compliance or complacence or something like that. I'll have to remind everyone that I've been here in this chair, a councillor for the town of Edgewood, since 2008. And I've paved more of the roads and voted for more money for those roads from the time I sat in that chair until today, when I'm talking about roads for our ICIP. And yes, I am here to make sure that this town moves forward. If you have any questions about that, look at the record. Not from this administration, but from the previous three. And the fourth one before that, where I was talking and making sure that things were done. And Mr. Seeger's and Ms. Eden both know that because they were there. As far as everybody else is concerned, I'm done taking your abuse. I really don't appreciate it. I have worked my butt off for this town for a long, long time, and it really, really irks me that you should be so insulting and so rude. I really, really think that having paved roads, having put more money in the road department for gravel, having pushed for solar here, having brought in a half a million dollars to build a wind tower at our power plant, which gave the town a great deal of gross receipts on that expense at a time when there weren't many gross receipts because the economy was in the tank, was quite an accomplishment. And I really, really do appreciate those people who appreciate what I've done. Whether or not you agree with me in everything, I, you know, I don't expect it, but I certainly, I certainly take offense to the kind of language that has been used over the last several years by a whole group of people bound and determined to do something that I'm not exactly sure where it's gonna go. But I'm looking forward to seeing it. I'm looking forward to getting a few more roads paved. And while I'm here, making sure that the next form of government, however, however it ends up, does the job that I've tried to do for the last 12 and a half, almost 13 years. And if anybody's got any questions for me, you can call me anytime. I haven't heard much. Not from, not from the group that's on the line right now. I know we disagree on things, but hey, we can agree to disagree. I don't generally like to sit on a stump or a soapbox during these things. I find that to be a little bit oppressive and somewhat offensive. But I thought I had to do it tonight. I'm really glad to see that of the 4,000-plus ballots that were mailed, that a big chunk of them came back. I'm wondering what happened to the ones that didn't come back. I'm wondering about those people and their opinion. There are a lot of people in this town. There's gonna be a lot of change. We have the 2020 census coming up. There are a lot of requirements of this town once we hit 10,000. I'm wondering whether, when that census is returned to us, whether we have reached that auspicious goal. That auspicious goal will require this town to do an awful lot with not a whole lot. And when that happens, I wanna watch. I will be there, and be sure that I will be watching just as carefully as Mr. McGill is watching our sewer plant. And with that, I'll hand it over back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Councillor. Councillor Abraham.
Hey, tonight, I would also like to thank all of the people who let their voice be heard in the latest election. I am proud of these numbers. I am proud that they all came out and voted and let us know that they care about our town. Sometimes, you know, you look out at the audience when we were having an audience, and very few people were there. I'm proud to say that people are watching, they're listening, they're participating, and for that, I'm very, very thankful. I do wanna say that I think this election was a big voice of the community saying they expect better of us. I think they expect us to listen to them, to respect them, and to be honest and open with them. I, I think we deserve, I think they deserve better than some of the things they've gotten recently. I think they deserve to have information without having to iperit. I think they deserve to know where our wastewater plant stands. You know, we're talking about, somebody said they wanted to send the sewer line up to water the soccer field. Well, that would be fine if we weren't paying for water right now to be able to water our roads because our sewer plant is not producing water that can be used. So I am very concerned still about our wastewater plant. I would like to see reports on that. I would like to know
Hold up, councillor. Hold up, councillor. Hold up. We've got a little technical glitch. Councillor Holly, are you there?
No, we lost her. Give me one second.
Hold up, just hold up. Confounded, computers.
Can we call for a break? I need to call my mom and see how she's doing.
Let's do that. Let's do that. Let's take about a three or four minute break.
You get what I mean there?
Yeah.
Right, we need a little inter-workout session?
You're right. Oh, I don't think I want
Councillor Holly, was that you just called in?
That's me.
Okay, they're taking a quick break. So just hang tight.
Okay, thank you.
Going back. Where's Courtney at?
She walked up for office left this morning.
Is she coming? Okay, we're back in session. Counselor Holly, are you on the phone?
Yes, I am on the phone now. I apologize, my internet connection went out.
Okay, just long as you're there. Uh, okay, Counselor Abraham, you were in mid-sentence.
I was, I don't remember what I was saying, but I did wanna continue and say, you know, I wasn't a resident on the night that Edgewood voted to become a town, but my brother was. And I remember watching it on the news, and I remember him not being really excited that Edgewood became a town. Um, but you know what? They voted and Edgewood became a town. They didn't wait eighteen months to change things. They became a town that night. And, you know, we are serving, myself, Counselor Abrams, and the mayor are serving on an extended term. I don't see what the problem would be for us to become commissioners or, or whatever we have to be. I think that people expect that their rights that they voted for become effective as soon as this election is canvassed and certified. So I do wanna say, um, thank you again to the people. I do wanna say that I will promise to do better in the future. I do wanna hear from you. My phone number's posted on the website, and, um, I do wanna listen. I do want us to do the things that the public wants. So that's what I have to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, Counselor Horemeal.
Well, good evening, everyone. And once again, I just wanna thank the public for your input and also the team members, the staff that were here with us tonight as well. It's good to hear from you, too. Um, I do wanna say congratulations to Edgewood. I do feel like this is, um, exciting time in some ways. Um, in other ways, things will not change. Um, but there will be, I think, some changes in the short term and the long term. And, um, I, I feel in some ways like it's Edgewood's next chapter. We had twenty years of, you know, the strong mayor council, form of government, with no single mayor being reelected, right? So you saw a lot of the agendas going back and forth and back and forth. So I'm, I'm kinda hoping that there would be, you know, consistency in that regard. Um, but it's a form of government that I'm already used to. So it doesn't, it doesn't scare me, really. Um, it doesn't intimidate me, because this is how our counties and our school districts are run. So we have eighty-nine school districts in the state run just like this, and the counties as well. Um, and so you still have your elected officials, and the people still vote for them. Um, but yeah, it does change some other things. And that mainly, I think, is the superpowers that now the people have of recall, referendum, and initiative. And I think that they worked really hard, um, for that. Now, I would like to recognize that for a little while, there were some accusations out there that, um, Core and whoever was making comments at meetings was just a small vocal minority. You guys remember, remember that was being said? So I was curious. I mean, I, I did see the legacy meetings, um, that Core had and other citizens that attended. And I thought, wow, this is, you know, hundreds of people. This seems to be pretty important. Um, but I knew we were gonna have to listen with this vote. And so just the numbers that have come out, like it's already been talked about, um, there is no doubt in my mind, this is definitely not a small vocal minority. This is definitely seven out of ten people. And, um, so again, you know, I've been saying, I'm listening. I always wanna hear what people have to say. Um, Counselor Abrams, I, I just wanted to encourage you to really hear what the public had to say. Um, they didn't complain about you in the past with roads and trails. So you need to really hear what it is they're complaining about, okay? And, and they're not complaining about that, all right? They're, they're complaining about the here and the now, and the F-Cor, and the residential sewer, and everything that's been shared with us on council over the past two years, that they're not being heard. They feel like they're not being heard, okay? If they, if they did feel that way, then, then you wouldn't have heard that comment at all. So there has to be some validity, um, to what they're saying. Um, and I really do appreciate all of your service to the town greatly. I really do. I appreciate, and no matter which side of the vote people were on, I just wanna make that clear as well. I appreciate hearing everybody's opinion and all of the hard work that so many people in Edgewood have done. Um, so I'm gonna continue listening, and I know we're gonna have another great twenty years, right? Even though this changes just a little bit. And these tools in the toolbox of the citizens for these checks and balances on power are great. It's a good thing for the public. So, um, Mayor?
Knocked up.
Mayor, I did wanna ask, I can't see the mayor, is he still with us?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, I just don't, for some reason, I don't see you. Oh, there you are.
I had to turn off the camera.
Okay, um, okay. You mentioned some, that we're gonna have to do certain things to implement this, and I just wanted to get some dates from you. If you have dates, I would appreciate that. And then, um, I'm hoping that maybe in Matters from a Clerk Treasure, you all can, uh, perhaps Mr. Torres, or since we have Carla here, that's great, please address what it is that's just going on with the sewer. I know Mr. McGill is very brilliant, and he knows his facts, and he's concerned that we're not posting information. That concerns me, too, and we promised the public to do that. So there's that part, and just, um, you know, if you could please address that in the Clerk Treasure comments, that would be fantastic. I don't wanna leave this meeting, leaving the public thinking, you know, those, those bad things that have been brought up. So, um, maybe you could explain. And thank you again to Liotta, if she is streaming. And, uh, I think I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Holly.
Okay, again, my apologies for my, my mess up with the internet connection. It's not happening, I'm doing this by phone. I also would like to thank everyone in Edgewood for the great voter participation. Uh, this will be a new chapter in our young history of the town of Edgewood. And I will work, um, with the rest of the governing body as we go forward to lay the groundwork for our new form of government. And in addition to those comments, I do have some other announcements to make. As far as the library goes, um, they are continuing the reading program into the school year to reinforce and reward remote learning at home, beginning August, this week, August twenty-fourth, through April of next year. And no registration is necessary. But to participate, you, um, should pick up a reading tracker, um, from the librarian and keep track of minutes of reading read by the child, or parents can also read to the children. And there will be grand prize drawings three times between now and the end of April. So contact the library for more information. But, um, I wanna thank our library staff for continuing, um, to provide great service through all the challenges that we've had. In addition, um, the Edgewood Healthy Foods Market, that is sponsored by First Choice Clinic, it was in conjunction with the Road Runner Food Bank, is still, um, functioning. Their next food distribution will be Wednesday, September second, so next week, at two thirty. And they are continuing this on a every-two-week basis. Um, and the distribution is primarily fruits and vegetables. There's no criteria for you to qualify. And I've been told that they are serving about fifty families each time. So, um, come on out and share the news with your neighbor, too. And finally, I wanna, um, remind folks that we've got free community dumpsters at Venus Park this Saturday, the last Saturday of the month of August. And that'll be available to you from eight until four P.M. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Mr. Torres.
Yes, Mayor Council. Um, so, well, one thing I've been trying to, uh, work for, work towards for quite a while is get the communication open with Santa Fe County Road Department, specifically when, um, they're out here doing work in Edgewood, um, whether it be striping, chip sealing, something on their roads that we have in common to clue us into that, so we can either, you know, potentially have the option to go in with them on a project or to, um, you know, if they're doing striping, to where they'll stripe all the way through and include our part, instead of just picking up and, you know, letting us know ahead of time. So I've been in contact with the, uh, head of the road department over there in Santa Fe County, and we're working together to try and get some sort of agreement together. Um, so, we, whether or not the town's doing a project, or the county's doing a project, if it's something mutual beneficial for all the residents in the area, um, we can move forward with that. Once again, like with the, um, you know, snowplow and that kinda stuff, if they, you know, if they need to stash some equipment down here or something in, in preparation for a storm, um, you know, just so we work more cooperatively together with them. Um, he seems very enthusiastic, and I really hope that, uh, you know, we'll get something hammered out and, um, specifically like the snow removal plans or something like that. So if, you know, we can help out a county resident who's literally just next door, or they can help out an Edgewood resident, um, you know, we've, we've got that, uh, that partnership going, and we wanna continue to grow that. So, um, I'm pleased to announce with, you know, we're working towards that. Once again, the election, um, I, I, I'm very, I'm very pleased with the turnout. I wish it were higher, but, you know, um, everyone, everyone always wishes we have higher participation in the elections, but that's, this was a record election for the town of Edgewood. And I hope they continue along that trend. I hope the next election has just as high turnout. Um, or even, even the general election, I hope Edgewood residents still turn out in those numbers. I mean, I think, uh, participation's essential, um, in any form of government, uh, just for you as leaders to know what the people want, need, and desire. With respect to the wastewater treatment plant, so we do have Mr. Hall, you know, he is, you know, he's, actually, I believe he's on his way out here now, um, to, you know, look at the plant, work on, work with it, working with Mr. Garcia, uh, to get it up and running. Um, you know, all I can offer is my apologies. The, the report is on the website now. And my apologies to Mr. McGill. Um, you know, human error, oversight, it happens, you know? Um, that's, that's part of life. We're not perfect. So if you wanna finger to blame, you know, someone to point the finger at, someone to blame, it's me, it's my fault. I apologize. Uh, but it is on the website now, and, you know, we're not trying to hide anything. There's nothing nefarious going on. We're not trying to, you know, break the plant or whatever might be out there. We're not trying to poison the ground. Sorry, new caller came on, and we're getting feedback, I apologize. But, you know, we're, you know, we're trying to work for, work with it, and we have, um, you know, we have Larry, our Level Four, we have Mike, our operator, out there. Um, they're working very hard, you know, as the issues come up, they're working towards them. Um, you know, just like any department, we work off of the recommendation of those that we have out there working in it. You know, whether it be the engineer, the laborer, the certified, um, operator, they, they all make recommendations, anything we can do to help streamline that plant we've been doing, you know? We haven't turned our back, we haven't done anything, you know, in my opinion, we haven't done anything wrong. Ever since we've taken over ownership of that plant, we've done nothing but improve it. Um, whether it be equipment we've replaced to just, you know, try, 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 trying to get that plant operating to where it should be. Uh, you know, when I first came on with respect to the plant, we were told it's broken, it doesn't work, we need to scrap it and get an Aromata. And we've now found out, hey, it's not broken. It doesn't need to be scrapped. We don't need to go spend eight million dollars on a brand-new plant. The one we have works, it just takes a little bit more maintenance cost to keep it running. I mean, that's what, uh, NMED told us at the time. You know, you, you have a new plant, make it work. You know, there's a lot of people, uh, communities in this state who would love to have the plants you do. They're, and you, you guys are producing good numbers, make the plant work. That's what we were told in late sixteen, early seventeen. So we've been working towards that. Do have a little update, so with the social security, um, we're still waiting to hear back from the social security. So, uh, our paraleasance and as well as our IRS liaison are all trying to get social security to come forward and let us know what we need to do. So we're not trying to sit on that or delay, um, but we're kind of in a holding pattern until we hear from them. So I think what we're gonna do is also, um, reach out to our congressional delegation and see if there's anything they can do to kind of push this along, so we can get that moving forward. And there is, there is one change that, and I'll put it on the next agenda. So, uh, with respect to kind of what the IRS, um, with the IRS audit, so we made some changes to the Police Department SOP. Uh, so we're now putting that money in their paycheck every month. So we changed the SOP to reflect that, instead of giving them lump-sum payments twice a year. Uh, we're just, we're putting that, you know, they're giving them, I believe it's thirty-five dollars of paycheck. Um, the chief did submit the change to the SOP, the mayor and I did approve it, and we'll just put that forth on the next time, next go-around, so you guys can see what was changed. And that's all I have right now.
All right, in Matters from the Mayor, uh, we've got this thing here where Carla's been working on it, where we, uh, are gonna try to put billboards out along the interstate and attract people to come into Edgewood. And so in this picture here, you see that black line here in the middle that kinda separates everything. When you look at it, it's like one, the top one above the black line, that would be one billboard, and the one below it would be another billboard. So this is what they've been working on, to try to get out there on those billboards and attract people to come in and shop here in Edgewood. Eat, shop, and stay. And there's a couple other changes they may make to it, to, uh, like additional billboards. But basically, this is sort of what the working, uh, plan is, is right here. You can see the different names on there. They reached out to the businesses, and the ones that responded are the ones you see on there. And so this is kinda what's in the works, and stay tuned. It'll be coming into, uh, reality here, I don't know, the next month or so, six weeks, something. here, I don't know, in the next month or so, six weeks, something like that, they were talking. Anyway, that's what it's going to kind of look like.
There'll be some variant of that as well for the banners.
Right, right. There's going to be a little bit of a variance, or a variant of this will be on the banners and stuff like that. As far as the election, glad it's come and gone, and that was a good turnout. Don't see that very often. Councilor Harmio, you wanted to know, I don't have any specific dates, the only thing we know for sure is the 10-day thing on when you have to put up a resolution column for the election of commissioners in November of 2021. That's about all I have tonight. So let's move on down to the action items. First one up here is a discussion, consideration, action on the recommendation to hire Rachel Martinez as the secretary receptionist for the town of Edgewood. And councilors, I'm going to turn my, or Rachel's going to come around here and sit in one spot and introduce herself to you. You've got her application and information in your packet, and she would be taking over where Courtney was at, at the front desk. If you want to go ahead and introduce yourself to the councilors.
All right, well, hello, everyone. My name is Rachel Martinez. Hi, so I worked a majority of my career as a manager at Icon Cinemas, Inc. While I was working there, I did a variety of different things. I did feel, I guess you would say, the hunger, I guess the want for more and to make a difference. So I, that ultimately made me make the decision to join the National Guard. Of course, life had other plans for me, and ultimately I ended up being discharged due to injury. My passion is helping people and just making a difference, and I try to bring my passion into anything and everything that I do in my, in life, including my work. Even if it's on a smaller scale, I believe you can make a difference on pretty much any scale. When I did apply for this job, I was looking for not necessarily a job, more of a career in which I could apply my knowledge gained from my experience, as well as expand my knowledge while growing both professionally and personally as well. I believe this position is a great fit for me, and I do look forward to getting back to the community. Thank you.
Council, have any questions for Ms. Martinez?
I do, Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilor Harmio.
Thank you for being with us tonight and applying with us. I just had two questions. I thought that you went to Bernardino High School, so I just wanted to see if you're related to anyone. We've had a little bit of drama with that in the past, and so I always ask, are you related to anyone in the town, or close to anyone in the town that we should know about? And then secondly, I forgot to look at your address. Are you, are you living in the town now?
So I'm living right now, currently, well, to answer your first question, no, I'm not related to anybody in the town of Bernardino. I grew up there, but my family...
No, she means Town of Edgewood.
Oh, you said...
No, the Town of Edgewood, because we have several employees from there.
Oh, okay. So from the Town of Edgewood, no, I'm not related to anybody in the Town of Edgewood. I just moved up here, actually, about four years ago. I do live off of 66, it's right on the line, like the Torrance County and Santa Fe line. We are actually looking at a house, me and my husband, here in Edgewood, that we're probably going to be moving into within the next six months. But I have lived up here in this area for about four years.
Mm-hmm, that's great.
Any other questions, councilors?
This is Councilor Holly. I don't have any questions, but Ms. Martinez, I look forward to meeting you in person, since I can't see you tonight. But I did want to remark on some of your skills and qualifications. You've had knowledge of proper cash handling procedures, your attention to detail, calm under pressure, and your customer service, I think will serve you very well in the town of Edgewood.
Well, thank you.
Thank you for applying with us.
There's no other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation to hire Rachel Martinez as the secretary receptionist for the town of Edgewood. And I want to add that reading your resume was actually quite pleasant. I haven't seen a clear and concise resume, and I read many, many, many of them. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Who seconded?
Councilor Holly seconded.
Okay, Councilor Holly seconded. We've got a motion and a second to approve the recommendation to hire Rachel Martinez as the secretary receptionist for the town of Edgewood. We'll do a roll call vote. Councilor Abrams?
Aye.
Councilor Holly?
Aye.
Councilor, you're muted.
I wanted to say welcome and aye.
Okay, and Councilor Harmio?
Aye.
Thank you, council.
Thank you guys very much. I look forward to working with you all.
Okay, councilors, the next item then is the discussion, consideration, and action on Resolution 2020-16. And this is the correctly-named clean and lean, which would be at 11 Range Road. And I see staff is on board now with this. Which one of you wants to take point on this one? Tanya or Tim?
I'll, I'll go ahead and do that, Mayor. Can you all hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Awesome, awesome. Good, good evening, Mayor and Council. Hope you're all doing well. I wanted to first thank you all very much for getting us the funding for this line item for the leaning cleans. This property has kind of been at the top of our priority for a very long time, and now being able to act on it, it's really great, so hopefully we'll be able to move forward with that. There's quite a lot of history on it, and it's been a lot leading up to this point, so it's definitely been a journey, that's for sure. And Councilor Abraham, if you wanted to interject anything, if I missed anything in the timeline, I know that's your former neighborhood, so I may miss something in there, feel free to just add to that story, because you may have seen some stuff that I might not have. I only have the file that I have and the police records.
I've been a mess for a long time.
Yes, it really has, and actually, I've been dealing with it since I was on the animal control side. I actually forwarded this to Michelle in the beginning of January of 2018, and she had been trying to come up with the process and work with these folks, and unfortunately it just didn't happen, and citations were issued, and things didn't get resolved. Ultimately, the property ended up becoming vacated, probably, I would say, around the, like, the end of 2018 to 2019. That's just not specified in what I have here. But after that point, from there, it was, sorry, just get my notes here, it was tied up in the court. And that's what basically has taken so long with this. So once I came on to work with Tanya in May, at the end of May 2019, this is actually still stuck in Santa Fe County District Court for foreclosure, and it actually remained such until March of 2020. So it was going back and forth with that for quite some time. And just as the foreclosure was about to be approved for a bank to take over the property, then COVID happened, and there was a federal moratorium on foreclosures, and that's continued to be extended. So currently, they haven't extended till August 31st, but they're probably going to just keep pushing that out and pushing that out until conditions become better for, so they can have their auctions in person for these foreclosures. So we were going to try to resolve this in the meantime, because after the property was vacated, it wasn't secured whatsoever. So we have an open front door, several windows are completely smashed in, it's very easy to access, and of course, that hasn't changed ever since the property was vacated, and all of the items were left inside the house. So you have furniture, you have basically every living item left in there. And they also had animals, too, and you can still smell the urine and the feces, even just, not even being in the house, you can just smell it from being outside of the property. And we actually did have, Michelle got some complaints of it from neighbors who were downwind, and I also got complaints as well, that, you know, the neighbors could smell this, and they were very concerned about it. They're like, hey, this is a potential health hazard for us, can you do something? Like, well, we're trying to, it's just a continual process here. But that's pretty much the long and short of it, and I've, of course, attached some pictures as well for you to all see the property in its current state. So I took that the day that the packet was issued. But that's pretty much the history of it, and we've, of course, had numerous police complaints as well, especially primarily about the security. People saying, hey, the door's open, or I saw a person there on the property, it's obviously not secure, and people are using it. And ultimately, this, it's just in such a dilapidated state that it needs to be cleaned and cleaned and taken care of.
And are we at a point now in that foreclosure moratorium where, I mean, the first order of business, it goes to the owner, and they get a period of time to address it?
Right.
And then if they don't, that's when we would come in?
Yes, that's correct. So once, if this were to be approved, then from 10 days after the receipt of this resolution, the owner has those 10 days to act on it and start the abatement process. If they don't, then the town has the chance to go ahead and go forward with the leaning clean and the remediation of the property.
And have you heard, have you heard anything from the owner, this Joyce Hutchinson?
Right, so I spoke with the court that was dealing with it, and they informed me that since, that since the sale, the foreclosure sale itself was suspended, that she is still the owner until a foreclosure goes through. And we went ahead and ran this through with our legal team as well. They said it's perfectly great to go ahead and do this now. We placed the lean with her as the owner, and then once they're able to resume the foreclosure process, whoever purchases it can take over, and they'll just have to pay that lean fee, the fee that the town will incur for the abatement of the property.
Mayor, Mayor?
Go ahead.
Can you let the governing body know what kind of estimate you're looking at if we do have to go the route of cleaning it?
Yes, so our cheapest bid was, with tax included, was $10,400 approximately. So definitely a very good number. We were expecting it to be higher, so that made us really happy.
And the car, the shooting carriage got to go. And I see the power's turned off.
Yes, that's correct.
How long has it been, basically, abandoned or whatever? This is going back years, right?
Easy on that, but definitely since either the...
'18?
Yeah, since either late 2018 or early 2019. I don't know if Councilor Abraham has a better estimate than that, but that's what I can gather from the files that I have here.
Well, I know we were talking about it at the budget meeting two years ago. It was one of the things that was of concern, was cleaning up some of these properties. So this has been a nasty, nasty mess for a very long time. I would say it's probably been empty close to two years now.
Back in '18, yeah.
So, yeah, that's basically all I have, but absolutely, we definitely need to take care of this for public safety, well-being of everyone in that neighborhood, so that no one's hurt or facing any sort of health effects from the property.
Ms. Mortensen, do you have anything to add to that?
No, I'm just glad to see that we're finally able to move forward on it. We've had a lot of calls on it, and I've been out there to the property a couple of times, and it's a mess, it's dangerous, and I know why the neighbors downwind are complaining about it, because the aroma hurts your nose, it burns your nose.
Yeah, it's definitely emanating.
Tim, could you also speak to the police department? How many times they've been called out there?
Well, they've had a bunch of different involvements, of course, me with animal control as well, but they've had several different complaints regarding suspicious people and the, just the door being open itself, and they think that someone is there, and the police have investigated it. They haven't necessarily found anybody in there on those calls, but it definitely looks like someone will go through there every so often, and who knows when that actually happens, or how long they actually stay there.
Okay. Council, got any questions for staff?
I have just one question. And that is on the foreclosure. So am I understanding correctly that we lean it, and then even if the bank takes it, we will be paid for cleaning this up? There's not a way for the bank to say, oh, no, we're first in line, and, and we don't care?
No, municipal leans are first in line.
That's all I have.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion on this one.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2020-16, declaring, what is it, 11 Range Road as a nuisance property, and us applying for a lean and clean.
Got a second? Councilor Abrams, did you second?
Yes, sir.
So we've got a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2020-16. I'm going to read just a little bit of it to get it into the record. "A resolution requiring the prompt removal of ruined, damaged, and dilapidated materials to abate an immediate menace to the public comfort, health, peace, and safety. The legal description is Township 10 North, Range 7 East, Section 26, 1.36 acres, Lot TRD-1-C, Lot Book 196/022, AKA 11 Range Road in the Town of Edgewood, Santa Fe County, New Mexico." We'll do a roll call vote on this one. Start over here with Councilor Harmio.
Aye.
Councilor Abraham?
Aye.
Councilor Abrams?
Aye.
And Councilor Holly?
Aye.
Thank you, council.
Thank you, Mayor Council.
Mayor, can I say something real quick?
Sure.
I just want to say that Tim has done a phenomenal job on this property. It went back and forth and back and forth, and he stayed on it until, you know, we got to this point. So, Tim, amazing job.
Awesome, and thank you, Tanya. And thank you, Mayor Council.
Thank you guys for being with us tonight.
You bet.
Okay, the next action item then is discussion, consideration, action on approving the financial report for the month of July 2020. Mr. Torres?
Mayor Council, so as you can see, our numbers are up again, a little bit higher than last month, you know, 471,386 totally, or total distributed. Weird thing on this one is retail trade was down, construction was down, so, you know, it's just, I think, kind of goes to that point where we're just going to play it by ear and keep, keep, keep an eye on it, but I think part of it is just a lot of people, I think, are just shopping locally instead of going into town. It's just, you know, I can't explain it, you know, as when this COVID first broke out, everyone was, oh, anticipate the decrease, the decrease, and, you know, hopefully, you know, our numbers continue to stay steady. You know, I think we're fortunate, and once again, like I said, we'll just kind of monitor it, and as things change, we'll definitely keep you apprised.
I think on that construction total, I see some people out there breaking ground here and there, that may crawl back up a little bit.
Yeah. So GRT, I mean, it's, it is up. I don't know really quite what to make of it. But if you want to turn over to the council report, so there's one item I definitely want to make you aware of, and it's that Car Crafters Vehicle Repair. So this one, I'm going to have to come with at the next budget, or sorry, next council meeting with the budget adjustment. So the, one of the police units was in, was in an ax...
So the, uh, one of the police units was in a, was in an accident that happened last fiscal year. Sorry, another caller. Um, anyway, on that note, so, yeah, we had a vehicle that was in a, a police unit was in the vehicle at the end of last fiscal year, and then the, um, insurance reimbursed us at the end of last year, but then the payment didn't come through until this year. So, um, you know, as of right now, on vehicle maintenance for the Police Department, they're over budget, so, um, they, we did receive checks in the amount of sixteen thousand, so we're gonna come back with, uh, you know, a budget adjustment for sixteen thousand for the Police Department. Uh, the other one, we've got Aqua Environmental, eight thousand, um, for Mr. Hall's services, and a lot of it is just, uh, membership dues and payroll, uh, but I'll stand for any questions.
Counsel, have any questions for Mr. Torres?
I do, Mayor.
Regarding the financial report. Go ahead, Counsel.
Yes, I just, I just wanted to find out, um, Mr. Torres, how many, um, or which vendors it is exactly that we are getting legal services from?
Um, Robles, Riallo, Denia.
Okay, and anybody else?
Not to my knowledge for any legal services. Uh, I mean, the Municipal League or whatever attorney they might assign us, but we don't reach out, I haven't reached out to any other legal firm for any advice.
Okay, all right, that's what I was curious about, if it was just, um, because William Zar is part of Robles then, right?
Yeah. Yes.
Zar?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so he's not separate, all right. Just wanted to double check on that and if there's any others out there.
Any, any other questions, Mayor, counsel?
Well, if nobody else got anything, I'll make the motion to approve the financial report for the month of July twenty twenty.
Counsel Holly will second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the financial report for the month of July twenty twenty. Do it on a roll call. Counsel Holly?
Aye.
Counsel Abraham?
Aye.
Counsel Harmio?
Aye.
And Counsel Abrams?
Aye.
Thank you, counsel. Calendar review, town hall, and other town facilities closed on the Labor Day holiday, which will be September seventh, uh, not this... Yeah, not the week coming up, but the Monday after that. And our next regular council meeting will be September ninth, twenty twenty. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mayor, I did want to ask, do we have any special meetings coming up on the radar?
Don't know of any, but something may be developing, so that's about all I can figure. We'll let you know as quick as we learn something.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Before I make the motion to adjourn, I'd like to remind everybody that, uh, the number of cases of COVID in eight seven zero one five are now one away from changing us to the twenty-six through fifty to fifty-one through seventy-five group. Um, in the last several months, um, we have quadrupled the number of cases, and then a little bit. For the first four months, we only had eleven cases, and now we've got right at fifty. Um, please, everybody be careful, and I would make a motion that we adjourn.
You got a second? Motion's been made, a second to adjourn. Roll call vote, Counsel Harmio?
Aye.
Counsel Abraham?
Aye.
Counsel Abrams?
Aye.
And Counsel Holly?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you, counsel.